This conference will now be recorded.
Heidi, what are you doing?
Clerk, please start the recording. Good to go.
Can you hear me okay? How about now?
Much better. All right. Today is Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, and I'd like to call today's work session to order. We do have a presentation, the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. This is a joint work session between the Planning Commission and the City Council. Mr. Ethan Spoo will be presenting. Ethan? You want a roll call in the work session? Oh, all right. We'll throw a roll call in there. Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Fox. Okay. Councilmember Casper.
Absent and excused.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leha.
Here.
Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strubin.
Here.
Sharon Elko Shari.
Present.
Jeremy Smith.
Absent, excused.
Dennis Hill.
Here.
Dennis Nutbrock.
Here.
Paul Jones.
Here.
All right. As I stated earlier, this is a joint work session. This is for the Comprehensive Plan Update for 2025. Mr. Ethan Spoo will be presenting. Ethan?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the council and also the Planning Commission and the public who are in attendance. We do have a presentation for you tonight, so I'm going to ask clerk to load those slides. They're in the packet, I believe, as well. Great, thank you. So, as you might know by now, and we've mentioned a couple of times... What's that?
Can you guys hear much?
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. So, as you might know by now, and as we've mentioned a couple of times to you previously, the city is obligated to update its comprehensive plan by June 30, 2025. And so, that comprehensive plan update will look at the next 20 years of growth and will center... This is a workshop, as was mentioned, and so I'm just going to encourage you to ask questions as we move through this to facilitate discussion. Feel free to raise your hand if you have questions at the time. Next slide, please. One back, maybe. Yeah, there we go. So, just a real quick refresher on sort of the basics of comprehensive planning and comprehensive plan updates. A comprehensive plan is a document that the city has, and many cities in Washington have, that has policies, goals and policies for the future. And there's also, very importantly, in the comprehensive plan is a comprehensive plan map that designates areas as, you know, for instance, for residential, commercial, or industrial growth. And the comprehensive plan is the basis of the city's development regulation. So, if you're wondering sometimes where these zoning regulations are coming from, where some of the ideas in the zoning regulations come from, a lot of times the answer to that is in the comprehensive plan. There are state-required elements or chapters in the comprehensive plan. Those include topics such as land use, transportation, environment, economic development, things like that, all aspects of the city's character and growth. The city is required to update its comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act, as I mentioned, every 10 years, and so that turns out to be June 30, 2025. We just got done with an annual comprehensive plan update, you might remember, in the fall of last year. The comprehensive plan can be updated annually, but the one we're working on right now is much bigger. That's a once every 10-year thing. Next slide.
Once every 10-year, and that's projected for 20 years?
Correct. Yeah. So, that'll look at the period 2025 to 2045. So, one of the main reasons we wanted to talk to you tonight is there's... There are a lot of new requirements that the state has put in place in the Growth Management Act, especially regarding housing and climate. And so, we wanted to run through some of those with you. So, the updates to the Growth Management Act for housing are really kind of centered around the idea of providing housing for all Washingtonians, no matter what their income, race, or ethnicity is. And those came into place around 2020, 2021. Those were adopted into the act. And so, some of those new requirements, we've summarized for you there on the screen, include inventorying housing needs within the community, including inventories by income category. And we've done that for you. I'll talk to you a little bit later about something called the Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy that we completed for the city. Those requirements also mean that the city has to identify sufficient capacity of land for, to accommodate those different income categories. And it also has to accommodate housing of different types. And the Growth Management Act mentions duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, multifamily, group homes, manufactured homes. So, there has to be a specific sort of projection of need for those different housing types, as well as for those different housing categories.
So, that means we have to zone property specifically for those different types of housing needs, but like, I guess, I don't know. So, the government basically dictates that what the developer has, wants, gets to build on a certain piece of property?
Yeah, so we're going to get into that a little bit later. But it's always been the case that Le Center and other cities in Washington zoned land and, to some degree, dictate what can happen on that land. And that includes, you know, what type of housing, what density of housing on that land. And that's always been the case even before these changes in the Growth Management Act that I'm talking about. I think the differences here that we're talking about is that, in the past, the state left it up to cities mostly how to accommodate that growth, what type of housing that would be, would that include affordable housing, would it not? Now, the state is saying, hey, you've got to explicitly consider planning for these different housing types and planning to accommodate housing that serves different income groups. So, that's...
Does it make a difference to the size of the city? If you're under 6,000, is that not a stringent?
So, the threshold you're talking about applies to the climate element of the comprehensive plan that we're going to talk about. But in terms of the housing element, all jurisdictions that are required to have comprehensive plans, which are mainly the larger, faster-growing jurisdictions on the west side of Washington, some in the center of Washington, have to meet these requirements for housing. So, then, those requirements also mean that the city has to identify local policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts, displacement, and exclusion. A racially disparate impact is something that results from a government action. You know, it could be zoning, it could be spending on infrastructure. For instance, that might have a different impact on a different group of people than another group of people.
Does this apply to population? This part of it?
Does this apply to the center, is what you're asking?
I identify with policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts.
You're asking if that applies to the center?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Interesting.
And then, last but not least, jurisdictions required to address and begin to undo those racially disparate impacts. And so, if there's policies and regulations that the city has that lead to those type of effects, then it's required to identify those and begin to undo them.
Do we think we have any of those policies? Sorry. Do we think we have any policies that lead to RDI?
So, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that as well. And so, I think in the past, and I'm talking about the United States in general, it was the case that many communities in housing developments in general put in place covenants that specifically restricted people of color from living in those areas. That was ruled unconstitutional in the 1920s. And then, from that point on, cities, jurisdictions looked for ways, either intentionally or unintentionally, to segregate housing. So, I guess what I would say is now, those type of impacts are usually unintentional, or those actions are usually unintentional, but sometimes they can still happen. One, you know, example might be in Portland in the 1960s. They built the IFRS freeway through a predominantly African-American neighborhood. And because of that choice, that had impacts on that community. Other examples might be the way a city chooses to invest in roads, or sewer, or parks, for instance. So, this is not saying that Le Center absolutely has some of these impacts or these policies in place, but it says it has to take these into account and to consider them. Okay, next slide, if there's no other questions on that. So, as I mentioned earlier, WSP completed a Housing Needs Analysis and Strategy. And that's basically just kind of a document that looks at a bunch of housing data, mostly from the U.S. Census and the American Community Survey, to kind of get an idea of what's going on with Le Center's housing supply and the people who need housing in Le Center. So, one of the conclusions of that study, which is available on, I believe is available on the city's website now, is that true, Jamie? Or will be soon, perhaps? The Housing Needs Analysis, we're planning on posting it.
Yeah, we're going to post that. I have to update the whole comprehensive plan site.
Right. So, it'll be on the city's website. And one of the conclusions of that analysis is that Le Center's housing stock lacks diversity. And so, what we mean by that is there's a lot of single-family detached housing in Le Center. I think we kind of all know that anecdotally by driving around. This graph that you see up there on the screen in front of you tells you that 79% of the population in households in Le Center owns, and 21% rent. Another statistic that came out of the Housing Needs Assessment is that 85% of the housing in Le Center is single-family detached. You could compare that to Clark County, which is about 65%. So, Le Center has a very high percentage of housing that is single-family detached housing. So, when I say, one of the conclusions of that study is that Le Center's housing lacks diversity. I mean that there isn't a lot of different types of housing in Le Center.
Is that an issue?
It could be an issue because that mean, that type of housing generally types tends to be more unaffordable to people who have lower incomes. And so, when I was mentioning earlier that Le Center is obligated to plan for housing to serve the all-income bands, all-income groups, that would be one potential impact of having a lot of single-family detached housing.
It's also lower density when we're trying to accommodate the population growth within the bounds that we have to work with.
I mean, I don't think we can really work backwards from... I mean, you can, I guess, if we, in the future, dedicate all of our free space to high-density, you know, living, but I don't think that's the direction that the city wants to go.
Yeah, and that's understood. And so, I think one thing that we're doing in providing advice to you is providing advice to the city on how it can meet the Growth Management Act. And so, another thing I mentioned is that, you know, the city's obligated to plan for all of these in-group, different income groups. I keep mentioning that. So, that's definitely a requirement of the Growth Management Act. That's something, as I said earlier, that the state in the past left to cities and local jurisdictions to determine. They didn't say, hey, you have to look at what your population is, what their incomes are, and what type of housing they would be able to afford based upon their income. Now, they're doing that. So, that's definitely a requirement that's coming out of, a new requirement that's coming out of the Growth Management Act. Le Center, and we'll get into this a little bit later as well, but when we're talking about the new growth that's projected for Le Center. But Le Center still has a lot of choices and autonomy to make, to exercise in regards to where that housing is located, what it looks like, and how it's going to be served.
So, is there like a certain balance or standard that they are wanting us to achieve at some point, or what's the end goal, did you hear me, I guess, as far as that goes?
Well, some of that, I'm not sure if you're asking about like if there's specific numbers that we're supposed to... Oh, oh. No, they don't mandate a certain percent of housing be, you know, multifamily or single-family or something like that. They just require that Le Center have adequate capacity to accommodate housing that serves those different income groups. And, you know, there's sort of a very vague statement in the Growth Management Act that says, "and make adequate provisions for." So, on one hand, that's vague. On the other hand, that still provides Le Center a lot of latitude to decide exactly how it's going to accommodate the housing, what it's going to do to address affordability, for instance.
Excuse me. One of the things that the Planning Commission has brought up in the past, and I think that's still being worked on, is in fact, we need a model that says, this is what this model should look like to accommodate low-income housing. And there's a number of factors involved in that. But if we, as a city, want to try to achieve that, we need some kind of a guideline. And today, we don't have that guideline that says, this is how we achieve low-income housing, by following 10 items, or following the following 12 items, or whatever. So, I think that's one of the things I would like us, as a city, to pursue, and I think the Planning Commission would want to pursue that as well, to come up with some kind of a formula that says, if we truly want to have, provide low-income housing, then we need to have a set of guidelines that says, this is how you achieve that, ultimately achieve it. Not an easy, not an easy subject, I know.
Yeah, so, we can probably work with you to come up with something like that. That might be, come in the form of some policies in the comprehensive plan, some targets that you could set. And then, there's, I'm going to talk a little bit later about, again, about the growth that Le Center is being allocated by the state of Washington and Clark County. And so, we can look at ways to accommodate that growth and what that might mean for different housing types. We're going to get into a little bit of that discussion tonight. All right, I'll keep moving, but keep asking the questions as you think of them. Next slide, please. Okay, so this graph, also from the Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy, kind of matches up the units by income group with the households, the income of the householders. And so, there on the left, you have extremely low income. Then you have very low income, moving toward the right, low income, and then moderate income. And so, extremely low income is defined as 0% to 30% of the area median income. The area median income is $90,000 for Clark County. Very low income is 30% to 50% of the area median income. And low income is 50% to 80%. And moderate income is 80% to 100%. So, what this graph shows is you can see that there's a difference in looking at the green bars and the blue bars. You can see that there's a lot more households at a given income level than there are available housing units. So, that just kind of points out, and this is, by the way, not a problem that's unique to Le Center in any way, right? Housing affordability is an issue across Clark County, across Washington, across the United States. And so, this shows that there's more people needing housing at a certain income level than are available in Le Center. So, that's one of the main conclusions also of the Housing Needs Assessment, is that there's a lack of affordability in Le Center's housing stock. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so this one, and this speaks to the issue of racially disparate impacts. And so, this shows the incomes of different racial groups in Clark County and Le Center. Le Center is in green, Clark County is in blue. And there's some missing bars for Le Center for different racial groups because there simply isn't enough information, not enough people reported to the census in those categories to provide information. But what this shows is that, if you look at the... If you look at the group of people reporting as white on the left-hand side there, it shows that they have a median household income of about $92,000, $93,000 in Le Center. In Clark County, that's about $84,000. As you move to the right, for black or African-Americans, people who report as some other race, it's a little unclear what that is, or two or more races, and then Hispanic or Latino origin, all of those groups have lower incomes than groups reporting as white. There are some reporting as higher, like, for instance, in Clark County, Asian householders have higher incomes than those reporting as white. But this points out, I guess, number one, and this is something, again, that's true not only of Le Center, but also of Clark County, Washington, and the country, which is that non-white householders generally have lower incomes than white householders. And so, what that means is that those people, because they have lower incomes, also face increased difficulty in finding housing that is affordable to them. All right, any questions on that before I...
When you say that, though, Ethan, and I look over and I see two or more racists, and I see the dollar figure at $121,000, how does that ring true in your last statement there?
Well, for that group, it wouldn't be true, based upon the information that we have.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, if you look at Clark County for white, American Indian, Native Hawaiian, I mean, and the other two that aren't, I mean, they're all generally pretty close, I guess. I mean, I guess, overall, there is a lower income for them, but I don't know.
It's a little bit of... It's a little bit of mixed results, and maybe I should have put a finer point to that, that some racial groups, as shown in this chart, have lower incomes in Clark County than whites, some have equal or sometimes higher. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on. So, some of the conclusions of that Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy, I've mentioned some of these already, lack of housing diversity, lack of housing affordability. One that I didn't mention is that there's a jobs-housing imbalance and lack of living wage jobs in Le Center. I think we kind of all know that anecdotally as well. There's not a lot of jobs in Le Center, and the jobs that are available tend to be lower pain, focused on retail service and those type of things.
We are working on that, Ethan.
Yes. And the, and we've said that the housing market and regulations likely have racially disparate impacts. That's one of the conclusions of that report. Again, that's going back to that chart that I just showed you that shows that for at least probably half of those groups that are non-white, they have lower incomes than white householders. And so, that then means that they face greater difficulty in finding housing that's affordable to them in Le Center if they want to live here. Okay. So, some of the recommendations from the Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy, there's different ways to address this. There's probably literally hundreds of different tools to address housing market issues. Some of the ones you've probably could guess or are aware of, one would be density bonuses. So, if a developer provides affordable housing, you could give them a density bonus elsewhere in the project, and they could increase the density. That would help offset the cost to them of providing that affordable housing. Rezoning land for duplexes, triplexes, multifamily, and then something called inclusionary zoning, which basically requires a developer to include a certain, to have a certain number of their units within their housing development, either their subdivision or their multifamily development, be affordable housing. There's financial incentives as well. The city could look at waiving fees of different types, impact fees, waivers of water and sewer connection fees, development fees. You have it. You name it. And then, of course, one of the recommendations of this Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy is that the city develop some new goals and policies in its comprehensive plan that address housing affordability and diversity. And so, it's our plan to do that. And then sort of around the April timeframe, we'll come back to you with a revised draft of, or a draft of the housing element of the comprehensive plan, and allow you to take a look at those, those policies that we've, that we've revised. So you'll get a chance to look at what we've, what we've done there. But I guess, any comments, questions about that, recommendations coming, coming out of that, that report?
Ethan, I want to add more work to your, to what you're doing already, but if you, if you can maybe weave it into your presentation somehow, maybe, maybe a 30-second or one-minute overview of like how cities grow, you know, based on the Growth Management Act. I think we take it for granted sometimes that we, you know, being on planning, that this is like native and intuitive to us, and, and maybe just for everyone in the room, if you just weave that in, I think it would help a lot. Because, because even my own family, they're like, why, why does La Center have to grow at all? I'd love to keep it exactly the way it is. And so then I have to explain to them laws.
Yeah. Okay, well, so what's the short version of, of that? I guess the short version is that population is increasing in Washington and, in the country, and generally, people are moving to, to Washington. In the early 1990s, the state put in place the Growth Management Act, basically because it saw sort of uncontrolled growth happening in the Puget Sound region primarily, maybe somewhat also in the eastern side of the state. And the idea behind the Growth Management Act was to, was to direct growth to cities in urban areas and protect rural areas outside of that by keeping them low-density, but also protecting the uses that you have in rural areas like farming and agriculture, mineral resource extraction, things like that. And then everywhere, both in and outside cities, trying to protect those areas that are really important to both people and habitat, you know, so areas around rivers and streams, wetlands, those are called critical areas. We've talked to you about those before. And those provide an element of safety for humans, but also are important for the environment and, and habitat. So that's kind of the, the basis of the Growth Management Act. Also, part of the Growth Management Act is the idea that the state comes up with growth projections at each of these periodic planning phases. It distributes those growth projections to each county. So the state of Washington Office of Financial Management, sometime last year, sent Clark County, hey, here's a low, a medium, and a high projection for your 20-year future. And then Clark County spent the last roughly six months or so talking about that, and they decided that they would choose a medium-high growth projection, so somewhere between the medium and the high number, which resulted in about 20,000 more people, which resulted in the need to plan for about 20,000 more people across, across the county. And so then that population, Clark County is working on this, and again, this is another thing we'll talk about, but Clark County is working on, and, and we're working with the county in allocating that population to the cities within the county and to the rural areas of the county. So is that what you were hoping for?
That was perfect.
Okay.
I couldn't have said it at all. No, I'm kidding. That was great. Thank you very much. I think that'll help a lot of folks.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, housing was topic number one, climate is topic number two. So because La Center is required to have a comprehensive plan, it's also now required, these are some of the new requirements that came in the last couple of years, it's also required to have a, what's called a climate and resiliency element in its comprehensive plan. So that's, that's essentially a chapter in its comprehensive plan that talks about climate change.
Counselor Casey Kasberg has joined the meeting virtually, just to let it be known for the record.
And there's different sort of pieces of that climate and resiliency element. The short and long of it is that La Center is required to have a resiliency, resiliency element, or resiliency sub-element, sorry, this is confusing language, required to have a resiliency sub-element, but not a greenhouse gas reduction sub-element. So La Center has to do less work than many of the cities in Clark County, such as Ridgefield, Vancouver, Kamis, Washougal, all have to sort of have this larger climate element than, than La Center has to. So resiliency is the idea that La Center has to come up with a way of adjusting to future changes in the climate. And I know there's a lot of feelings out there about climate change, whether it exists, whether it doesn't, what we should do about it, who causes it, all of that sort of stuff. I'm going to go back to one of my prior statements, which is just that WSP's job is to provide advice to you as the city of La Center on how to comply with the Growth Management Act requirements. And so all of my comments are, are provided in that, in that context. So that resiliency element has to include a couple of things. One, it has to protect natural areas to foster resiliency, and it has to provide an element of community resiliency, and then it has to address natural hazards. And so a couple of examples here, for natural areas, those might be things like stream buffers, thinking about providing adequate stream buffers, because someday, there might be larger floods, and those stream buffers, which are those vegetated areas around streams, are then available to accommodate those, those larger floods. Community resiliency, that's, one example of that is talking about the built environment. And so if there's going to be more heat in the future, one way to deal with that might be to plant more trees, require developers to plant more trees, to provide greater shading within the city. And then natural hazards, I've listed some of them there. Clark County has a natural hazard plan, so that may factor into this. The city might be able to adopt that natural hazard plan to fulfill some of these requirements. So the other thing you should know is that the city signed an inter-local agreement within the last couple of months, I guess, for another consultant, not WSP, this consultant's working countywide, so it's working for Clark County, plus all of the cities within the county, to kind of do a baseline data analysis of essentially what future conditions will be like in the county. And the city got a really good deal out of that, because it's going to cost the city basically about $5,000 to $6,000 to complete that analysis. And then they'll hand that over to the city, and WSP will help the city develop the goals and policies of its climate and resiliency element. So that's kind of the climate requirement in a, in a nutshell. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll move on then, maybe to lighter topics, like how much growth we're going to have in the next 20 years? Okay, so I kind of explained that Clark County's been working on these growth allocations. The county has something called a vacant buildable lands model that it maintains, and it updates every year. And basically, what that does is it identifies vacant land that's available for development in the county, and, and then projects what the capacity of that land is to accommodate new housing and new jobs. So for this periodic update effort, as I mentioned, we've been corresponding with the county. In fact, the city has a meeting with the county and all the other cities in the county tomorrow to talk about the growth projections for the next 20 years, and who's gonna, who's going to take what, so to speak. So what the county's preliminary numbers show, and I want to emphasize that this is preliminary, because they're continuing to refine this, so I'm going to come back to you at some point again with some more final numbers. But what the county's numbers show, at this point at least, is that La Center, within its urban growth area, so that's the city limits, plus the area immediately adjacent to the city limits, that's, that's within the urban growth area, can accommodate 2,148 housing units. That's based upon the zoning in La Center, and it can accommodate 2,134 jobs. So that's, that's on the capacity side. The other side of the equation is the allocation, and so that's the amount of growth that Clark County is planning on assigning to La Center. And those numbers, right now, show that they're going to be assigning La Center 2,562 housing units and 2,870 jobs. So the sort of math of all of that is that we would have a shortage of 414 housing units. Our, our land in La Center could not accommodate those, those 400 housing units. And likewise, there would be a shortage of capacity of about 736 jobs. And I see that Councilmember Boyle is formulating a question.
Continue, I'll wait.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, one question I had, I guess, since you pulled me out. So are we talking like jobs countywide, or jobs within the city?
This is jobs within the city, basically, so within La Center's urban growth areas. So this is between now and 2045.
What are they basing that off of? I mean, that's a lot of.
Yeah, that is a lot, so.
Half our population right now.
Right.
Working in the city.
So it's based on basically a couple of things. One is the capacity of the land now, and then secondly, the allocation that came down from the state and then down to the county. The county has to figure out how to allocate all of that across, across the county and the, and the cities. So one thing I can tell you is that most cities in the county do not have enough capacity for these 20-year, for this 20-year growth. So La Center, again, is not unique in that respect. And so essentially, what that means is that La Center can do a number of things. It can consider expanding its urban growth area boundary, so there's more land within, within that area that would eventually be annexed and become part of La Center. It can rezon land within La Center, you know, from low-density to medium-density. Or we could come up with a high-density residential zone somewhere that has higher density than our medium-density residential zone currently does. Or it could do a combination of those things. It could expand the urban growth area and, and upzone some. And then the final choice is, we could work with the other jurisdictions in the county, and this is the discussion that's happening tomorrow. We can work with the other jurisdictions in the county to direct growth elsewhere. So one question we have for those cities tomorrow is, who's a buyer and who's a seller of housing units and jobs? And so we want to find out from them, hey, you know, if La Center doesn't, in theory, want this growth, and that's going to be a decision that's up to the La Center City Council, if La Center didn't want this growth, would you be able to accommodate it? And it sounds like there may be some takers of that growth. But there's pluses and minuses of doing that, right? Less people, less tax base, less jobs.
I guess these seem like unrealistic numbers, in, in my opinion, or maybe I'm just not seeing the whole picture, but, I mean, they allocate all of these jobs and units to be added to our city, but like, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't apply. I don't know if I mean.
Well, you know, just, just for some reference and background, they have projected three to four million people along the corridor, all the way up to Tacoma. So if you equate that number to our town, and then look around what's already happening, and we're talking by 2045, so we're 20 years out still, a couple thousand, two, 3,000 people is really not a high number, as opposed to the 3 million that'll be living from here to Tacoma.
Those are housing units.
Yeah. Right, right, right. But while, but it's still, the 2,000 houses aren't going to be 3 million people. I mean, it's going to be about 10,000. Right. So the numbers aren't that big.
This is Councilmember Kasberg. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Question, question, Ethan. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Say, Casey.
Yes, we can hear you.
Ethan, is, I seem to remember that for, basically for, for industrial or retail-type land areas, there's, is there a, kind of an average formula for jobs per acre?
Yeah, there is, and I maybe should have mentioned that. And so one of the assumptions that the county uses is that for industrial land, it will accommodate nine jobs per acre, and for commercial land, 20 jobs per acre.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just learning. I'm trying to understand, like, comprehend what all these numbers mean, and they just don't add up.
Ethan, could you tell us what the population allocation is for this period of time? It's 4,500-ish?
Well, so there's, the, the number that the county uses per unit is 2.66 people per unit. So you're talking about roughly 5,000 or so. So La Center might have, you know, add that to the existing population, and La Center might have around 9,000, maybe 10,000 people in that 20-year future. And so sort of the last couple rows of the table here are giving you a little bit of a flavor of, okay, we have this deficit, what would we do if we decided to accommodate, accommodate it, what would that mean? So if La Center were going to expand its urban growth area and incorporate more low-density residential land, it would have to grow by about 83 acres. If that was going to, if that expansion was going to be medium-density, it would be about 35 acres of, of new land. On the other hand, if it upzoned, if it didn't expand and it upzoned existing land, it would, from low-density to medium-density, would be about 60 acres that would have to be rezoned. And then if La Center came up with a new high-density residential zone, which doesn't exist now, the medium-density zone accommodates eight to 16 units per acre. That's a simple way of putting it. And so a, a high-density zone would accommodate something beyond that, you know, like 16 to 24 or something, with maybe an average of 18. We assume for the purposes of this exercise that that new high-density residential zone would accommodate 18 units per acre. In that case, if you rezoned the land from low-density residential to high-density, you'd have to have 38 acres rezoned.
And that's all using our current urban growth boundary, so.
The last, the last row, yes, of the table.
What about jobs, Ethan?
Right, I skipped over that. So on. So on on the expansion acres, that's basically showing that if it was industrial, you would have to have 82 new acres. If it was commercial with 20, you know, it's 20 jobs per acre, you would need 37 new acres. We didn't do sort of the the rezoning calculation for jobs because it was kind of unclear, like, well, rezone what, from what to what? Is it from residential to? And then you're losing residential capacity. And so that then means you have to go find additional residential capacity somewhere else. So that was a little bit more complicated. Okay, next slide. So part of the work that the county, actually the state and the county do for the city is they put together this thing called a Housing for All Planning Tool, which is that H A P T abbreviation there. And so you might remember early on in the conversation, I said that La Center is not only required to plan for the total number of units that it has to accommodate, but it's also required to plan to have enough capacity for each of these income groups. Extremely low income. Looks like we mislabeled some of the table. Okay. So, yeah, extremely low income, very low income, low income, moderate income, and and below. So extremely low to moderate income, it has to accommodate those those housing unit types. And then high income, which is 100 to 120, and then above 120, La Center can optionally choose to plan to have capacity for that type of housing, but it's not required under the Growth Management Act, only moderate and below. So this tool that the state put together and that the county has dropped some numbers into, based upon La Center's future population growth, show that, you know, across these different income categories, how much housing La Center will need to plan for in its 20-year future. And there's two different methods for doing that. I won't get into that too much. It's kind of just like difficult to understand. It's black box stuff. The state hasn't, unfortunately, hasn't provided a lot of guidance on this. But basically, the difference between that method A and method B is that method B follows a consistent county share of of growth. So for instance, if Clark County, if Clark County needs to have 25% of all of its housing be very low income housing, and just throwing numbers out here, then it would also assign Center that 25% of its housing would be in that same category. So that's method A. Method B takes into account history, so to speak. So if a jurisdiction in the past has had less affordable housing, then it tries to give more to that jurisdiction to offset that. And so if you see that that very last column there that says 120% and greater, it shows that under method A, La Center would be allocated 752 housing units. But method B takes into account the past. And as we talked about, La Center doesn't have very much in the way of affordable housing. So it gets less of that higher income housing and more housing in the the low to to moderate. That's, that's the best I can explain it. One option, if you have a lot of questions about how this all works, we can bring Commerce here and have them try and explain it to us because they just have not given us that that information. They they lock the spreadsheet down. We can't see the formulas or how it works. But they've provided some general explanations. And so if you're interested in this, we can invite Commerce, as I said, to a future meeting to talk about how sort of all of this this works. And we probably invite the county at that same time.
You bring up a very good point, though. When when you say history and such. So this is done, if I remember right, every seven years, right? When we start these conversations. How close are the numbers seven years ago to today, to what they predicted then?
I don't know. That's a good question.
It's never been very accurate, is it?
Not.
Okay.
I can tell you that on the job side of things, that's especially true, right? The jobs numbers have turned out to be overly optimistic. And I'm not talking about just La Center. I'm talking about everywhere in the county, like Camas for years has tried to get employment. And they have some employment, but they're far short of their their job goals. So that's definitely true on the on the employment side, on the housing side. I'd have to kind of, I'd have to kind of look at that. We might be able to look at what the 2016 comp plan projected, for instance, and come back to you and and say, okay, here's what projected, here's where we're at now. Did we, are we growing as fast or faster than we thought? But in general, La Center is going very fast, right? I mean, I think we all know that.
It'd just be interesting to know. That way, then you can base the information off of the previous data, right? Because that's going to be more accurate than somebody throwing some hidden calculations or equations in a spreadsheet and hiding it from everybody.
I absolutely agree with you. However, the Growth Management Act actually requires the state to provide this calculation for the counties and cities. And so we're obligated to use this, even though there may be some things about it that are less than than ideal. Additionally, the city and the counties, I'm sorry, the cities and the county are obligated to use the same projections and plan for the same future. You can't have city A doing one thing, city B doing a completely different thing.
So Ethan, at what point will the county decide what method is going to apply to the county?
I think that'll come up tomorrow. So we're trying to have as much, we're trying to give La Center as much say in this as possible, right? Clark County is is basically charged under the Growth Management Act as being the Growth Management Agency of of this area. So they set urban growth boundaries, for instance, and they allocate growth to urban growth boundaries and outside of urban growth boundaries. So that'll come up in the discussion tomorrow. As you can imagine, depending on how all of these numbers kind of fall out between the different communities, different cities may advocate for method A, other cities may advocate for method, method B. But that's definitely one of the questions we're asking tomorrow is which method are you going to choose? And when do we get to have input on that?
Have we formulated a position on which one we would prefer?
No. So I guess I would take your your input on that either now or some other time, if you have a chance to take a look at the, take a look at the numbers. Okay, next slide, please.
That almost needs to be another workshop, I think, together.
But if we're going into negotiation pretty soon, we ought to have a position.
Agreed. Definitely agreed.
Okay, one question on that. Are those numbers pretty set and stoned as they're distributed? Or are they just looking at the overall arching, you know, like the percentage we that we have policies, that we have plans, ways of allocating housing across the board of the income levels? Or are they looking to see how well are we hitting those numbers that they fabricated? If you don't want to. Does that question make sense?
I think, yeah, I think it makes sense. And so it's a good question because another one of the new requirements in the Growth Management Act is that the county, in concert with the cities, come up with a program for monitoring all this growth and and whether whether the county and jurisdictions are meeting their their allocated growth. So in a in a couple of years, I think it's starting maybe in like three years, the the county is obligated to have this program in place that looks at all of these numbers and assesses, okay, who's meeting, who's not? Why are they meeting? Why are they not? So that conversation will definitely come up at that point. And so at that point, it won't be just a theoretical conversation about, hey, you know, back in 2025, the state and the county allocated us these numbers, and who cares about them beyond that? It'll, it'll come back into conversation again.
Before we move on, Ethan, Dennis brings up a good point. What timeframe would we have to have that decision on which way we wanted to go?
So here's the, I guess, here's the thing about the, the county has not made it clear when they're going to make this decision or when they want our input. And so that's why tomorrow I want to emphasize to them that we want input on it. So I'm guessing sometime roughly in the next month, they need that information. And so if La Center wanted to, for instance, put together a resolution or something that that provided a recommendation to the county, we could do that.
Yeah, I just, we could get a little bit more information and education on how those numbers are formulated and how they apply to us. That'd be helpful. Give us direction.
Sorry, jumping up to the table here. I think, you know, if if we can get some sort of initial guidance or feedback that we can start taking back to those meetings, I think tonight that would be helpful. You know, doesn't it, we don't have to have a firm position, but, you know, broadly speaking, do we want, you know, to stick with the projections for jobs and housing that we've got? Do we want to go more? Do we want to go less and try and, you know, trade some of that away? Or do we want to try and, you know, be a buyer or a seller basically on those? And then, you know, sort of the the two differences between the the model A and the model B is, you know, sort of the allocation B, you have sort of a higher density of units in that sort of moderate to to full median area income versus on method A, you have more in the low income or in the high income, it's more evenly distributed. So, you know, sort of initial takes on that, I think, would be welcome at this point. We don't have to firm up our position, but, you know, having some sort of initial guidances, we're starting to have these conversations with other cities would be helpful.
Has the commission been briefed on this before? So you guys are in better understanding of it?
We don't know what's in the black box.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I guess, you know, it would be nice to know that, but to a certain extent, like Ethan mentioned, it's, it doesn't matter because we have to pick a method and go with it as a, as a region, as a county, so.
So the county has to decide whether it's method A or B?
Exactly. And then every city and the county itself will use either A or B. So, you know, and if we're leaning towards A or B, it'd be good to kind of know that. Again, the major difference is, you know, sort of B is more grouped up in that sort of middle of income and A is has got more on the high income side, but it's also got more on the low income side. And I think Commissioner Nutbrock at the council, at the commission meeting when we were talking about this a couple of weeks ago, made a good point, you know, it's going to be challenging for La Center to meet that very low or extremely low income level because we just don't have the services, we don't have transit, we don't have, you know, that sort of infrastructure in place. You know, so that, you know, would sort of point us more to the method B, which has less of an demand there. But then it kind of cuts both ways because then we have less of that 120% as well, so.
Well, and the landscape's going to change in 20 years, too. So it's going to be a completely different ballgame when you get up near the junction and and south of it. I I don't think I've made a hidden point that I want to grow the city and take, you know, go south down the junction and and towards Ridgefield, right? And and see the growth there as well. So, yeah, a little bit to discuss there, counsel, commissioners.
I think in some ways, though, it seems, method B seems more practical just because it reflects more of what's our history, not just a, okay, 25% has to go and that's going to be across the board countywide. That that doesn't seem to nuance. La Center is very different than Vancouver or or different areas of Clark County. So I think, to me, leaning on a method B approach would seem to make more sense.
I would agree. I think it's all unrealistic, but we all agree on.
I just, I want, I want to take your guys' opinions.
Yeah, yeah.
Into consideration, being that you guys have more time spent on this stuff. I mean, it sounds like B is the most logical answer for what we already have going on.
And we, at this point, we don't know if we choose B, those numbers are going to change potentially also.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say about these numbers is that they're probably at the 85 to 90% level, so they're going to change a little bit. But I don't think they're going to change a lot in the future from here on out.
Ethan, let me ask you this. I know you're going to be meeting with the county this coming week or this week. In previous meetings or has the state been involved in any of those meetings? And and if so, going back to the mayor's comment earlier that from previous inputs that we've had in our, in our, in our plan, and talking about how did we, how did we measure up to those plan, to that, those numbers? Has it been discussed with the state on, does that take, is that being taken into consideration when we're looking at these? If we've, if we've missed the mark by 60% or whatever, how does that affect us going forward? Do we just, we just ignore that? Are they just ignoring that? Or is that really being taken into consideration when we, when they're doing their new projections? Our past history, how well did we do against our plan? If we've only accomplished 40% of it or 30% of it, how does that impact their decision? Or does it impact their decision making? Do you know?
So on the first question about whether the state has been involved in these meetings, so that meeting I'm talking to you about is a city-county-tribe coordination meeting. So it's basically sort of a group of staff members from all of the agencies talking about this information. So they have not been involved in that. They were involved early on in the county's planning process, and they came to a county, county council meeting and talked about it at at that point. As I said, we can invite them to come here at some point and talk to us about how this, how their their allocation tool works. In terms of what has happened in the past, that is indirectly taken into account because La Center has a certain land base, right? And as that land base is used up, then there's less land available for development. So La Center hasn't expanded its urban growth area boundary in in quite a while. So those previous decisions and how we've measured up against like our previous allocations is kind of factored into that land model and how much land is left. In other words, if you grow faster than you were projected to grow back in 2016, then there's less land left, and so that's factored into the model. If you grow slower than you were projected to grow, then there's more land available. And that's also reflected in in the county's model. Okay, we'll move on. Only a few minutes left, I think, but.
Brian, did you get your answer?
Yeah, I think as far as the methods, I think we kind of have some direction that we can start taking in as we need a firm position, you know, from from the city and the council, we can come back for that. I guess the other piece, though, is the the sort of horse trading. And there's these these meetings going on amongst the cities. You know, we have, what was it, like 5.6% of the overall county growth or something about like that assigned to us? You know, we can go up or down from that amount and, you know, like Ethan was saying, sort of horse trade that amongst the cities. I think, you know, from from staff and consultants' perspective, we were a little surprised when we got the allocations and we got the capacity, and they were actually, I think, closer than we were thinking. We thought we were going to have a more of a deficit maybe than we, or especially on the housing side. I think we knew we would maybe need some more jobs land and have some ideas on where to potentially put that. But, you know, again, we can, we can try and, you know, horse trade amongst the jurisdictions and get that so that we're, you know, our capacity is is closer on both the jobs and the. the jobs and the uh, um, residential side. Um, or, you know, if we think that they're low, we can, we can say that we're willing to take some on, but, you know, the council sort of thought, or we can say we're, we're pretty happy with where we're at here. Um, so that would be some, some helpful feedback to receive as well, I think.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. And so just um, an additional point to that would just be that, um, and this is just an example, if, if the city wanted to direct um, housing growth, population growth elsewhere, but try and keep the jobs allocation, it could do, it could do that too. So it doesn't, it could go different directions on, on population and housing.
How many of these meetings are you guys going to attend before it's actually finalized? Yeah, so we've got a little bit of time to actually talk about horse trade is what I'm asking, right?
Yeah, so the county has indicated that they're going to be updating their model um, again through February. So that's kind of where that one month timeframe that I mentioned.
Also, the horse trading also has to be done within that one month as well? Okay.
The, the, yeah. That's what we're telling the county because they haven't provided the timeline, but we're saying, hey.
We're trying to kind of keep the county on track. It's, it's, we're already kind of several months behind where we hoped we'd be as far as these projections. So the longer they kind of muddle it over, the farther behind we get. So we're trying to kind of keep them, keep the pressure on them to keep this process moving.
So do we want to continue work sessions together until we come up with this number? Or do we want it to go to the planning commission in one of their special meetings and then bring it forth to the council? I mean, there's, there's a few options here, right? Counsel, commissioners, thoughts?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I mean, I definitely think we need to continue this discussion.
As a group, as separates and get the advice from the planning commission.
I like being able to use you guys' resources and, you know.
Yeah.
You like that as well?
I do, too.
Councilmember Serpents?
I've been through this.
I, I think then we should make an arrangement for another work session together. Um, it may need to be a special work session as well since we're limited on time.
We can take a look at schedules.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Right, um, so.
Before you go though, Ethan, you do have a direction though tomorrow, uh, when you're doing this meeting that we're going to go towards the B at this point in time. Horse trading though is something we can get back to amend, so.
Yes, and I've, just so you know, and, and to be completely open, I've had preliminary discussions with um, the other cities in the county about, hey, if La Center wanted to trade growth, would you be open to this? I think I mentioned that earlier. I, we've made no commitments or anything, but I just wanted to test and see if they would be receptive to that in case that's what you wanted to do.
And your results?
Well, there's some receptivity there. I don't want to commit the other cities in the jurisdiction right now because they haven't made a final decision either for a lot of the same reasons that were, you know, that, that we haven't made any final decisions, but there's, there's an openness there from some jurisdictions to accept growth.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I think one of the strongest arguments is one that Brian mentioned is, you know, we've got allocation of extremely low and very low income and we clearly don't have the services out here to support that, probably won't for a long time. You know, those services are in the center, in Vancouver. And so we shouldn't be burned with that kind of allocation if there aren't services here to support it.
I agree, I agree.
And I think that's a county-wide discussion as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so real quickly on the, thank you for that direction and I'll be sure and share that tomorrow. Um, on the work plan and schedule, we've kind of redone the work plan and schedule, just real quick snapshot of that. We're basically planning now in sort of a year of intense work here in twenty twenty-four. Um, so we're going to come back to you in April and May to talk about land use and housing. Of course, you, we're, we're hearing you say you want some additional workshops, so, but the schedule is, is on the slide, is we're going to come back to you in April and May to talk about land use and housing. That would be a complete land use and housing element of the comp plan plus some code that goes along with it. Um, in September and October, we would be talking to you about public facilities, so that would include things like transportation, parks and recreation utilities. Um, and then this, in December and into January of next year, um, there's a bunch of other elements of the comprehensive plan that aren't undergoing as much change that I'm kind of characterizing as minor comprehensive plan elements, and those include environment, um, climate, which we mentioned, um, economic development, uh, historic archaeological and all the rest that you see on the, on the screen there.
Real quick, Ethan, the parks and recreation in September, October, when is our park plan? When, when are we going to be presenting that to council?
Uh, we'll probably be bringing that in February. So that it's sort of two sides of the same coin. So we have the parks and recreation comprehensive plan, which will be an appendix to the comprehensive plan, but there's also a chapter in the comprehensive plan that sort of draws and summarizes that. So, um, the overall parks plan is coming to planning commission in February and then uh, we'll be bringing it to council shortly thereafter.
I just wanted to make sure that we're coordinating it together instead of putting it so far out and maybe missing something, right?
Yep.
Next slide, please. Okay, so switching topics again, I, I know I've been talking for a very long time here. Um, visioning, so the comprehensive plan contains a community vision in it, and that's kind of the highest aspirational statement in the comprehensive plan about what the community wants to be um, in the future. Um, and that vision statement is used to um, develop goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, which in turn, as I said, help us develop um, uh, the development code and, and the zoning regulations. And that also, to some degree, influences how La Center spends money because the, the city's capital improvement program um, is informed by the goals and policies in the comp plan. So we had, there was a tree lighting ceremony in December, as you know, we showed up to that, um, WSP and city staff were there over about a half a day and we met with ninety community members. We had a couple of boards there, a board that sort of summarized the existing community vision and then another um, board that asked people questions about where they would like to see growth um, directed. Um, and so some key themes that came out of those comments, um, of, of those interactions, which by the way, ninety is a really good number. It's, it's great that we were able to show up to that and um, that's, you know, uh, that was a really good uh, interactions.
You're going to have another shot at it, Ethan, at our days. We'll make sure that that happens in the summer, there's even more people, so it'd be good.
Thank you.
Interaction.
Um, so some of the things that people talked about there were continued support for schools and youth in La Center, expanded trails and improved connectivity, um, having another east-west route through town, um, uh, bringing more jobs and incentivizing business growth, a, a grocery store was mentioned in particular. Um, and then people have sort of mixed feedback on residential growth. You know, some people were like, hey, you know, I own this property, I love, you know, I love growth, I want growth on my property. Other people were, hey, I don't want, you know, La Center's big enough as it is. Um, so, um, a lot of different opinions there on residential growth. Um, next slide, please. Um, so that existing community vision in the comprehensive plan, um, I've kind of just real briefly summarized it for you, but we're looking for your input on it. It talks about um, character of the city, um, particularly maintaining La Center's small town character. It talks about connections through sidewalks and trails and, and streets. Um, it talks about providing housing for all um, uh, for a variety of different incomes and demographic groups, you know? So before the Growth Management Act brought new requirements into place in the last couple of years, La Center's comprehensive plan already has a statement in there about providing housing to meet a variety of different populations and needs. Um, it talks about preserving the environment and, and how important that, that is, especially critical areas, um, again, wetlands, streams and things like that. Um, it talks about economic independence and it calls out downtown in particular, bringing jobs into downtown, developing additional neighborhood centers, and it also talks about Tim and Landy um, as a job, uh, a place for job growth in the junction um, as well. And then on the public facility side, kind of a vanilla statement, but it basically says, hey, plan adequately for public facilities to support this growth. So at this point, we're sort of looking for your input. Um, I know you've given a lot of input already, but if you have any thoughts on that community vision, where the community should go in the future, what kind of aspirational statements um, you would like to see put into the vision, uh, you know, like to get your input on that. And there's kind of three key questions up there that we have for you. What are we now? Where do we want to go in the future? And how do we, how do we get there? So if you have thoughts on that, I would appreciate it.
I think I'd like to see the city continue the small-town feel, but with a very vibrant and thriving downtown uh, area for residents to enjoy after-hours uh, leisure time and still be able to get the amenities that, that they desire instead of having to go to Ridgefield or Woodland. Um, I, I also want to, you know, continue the growth on the, the parks plan, uh, the trail system that we're working diligently on right now, uh, and exploiting our natural resources because I think that's our greatest asset in this area. And I think that's what's going to drive people to this town, uh, on top of that small-town feel, so.
You know, we always hear, want to maintain the small-town feel, but we've asked ourselves the question, okay, what, what are the elements that, when people say that, what are the elements in the city that they're looking to preserve? I mean, if you're talking about greatly expanding the downtown area, that probably goes against the small-town feel. So I know, I know there's not an answer, but that's something we got to address is, what are we trying to preserve when we say we want to maintain a small-town feel?
I think still having that, uh, those same anomalies that we had when we all moved here, twenty, thirty, or some of us, lifetime ago, Al. Um, so, you know, like, uh, back in the day, the police used to hand out candy on Halloween. They would, they would stop the kids and hand out candy, the culture, yeah, the culture. Um, you go to some of these smaller towns in California, they're not small, they're actually very large, you go to Los Gatos or something, but you get into the middle of it and it's still small-town feel. And I think that La Center could accomplish something along those same lines.
My point is, we've got to understand what those elements are and what they're preserving.
Right, right, agreed.
I like, one of the elements I believe is all these nice little shops, like we, the, all the four shop, four or five shops that we have above the, the Chevron station, uh, you know, the, the Fern and Willow and um, Napatide and the hairdresser, all these nice little shops. To me, that feels small-town and um, that's one of the things I like to see preserved.
Twenty-five mile an hour speed movement.
Yeah.
You're killing me, Sean. That kind of give you some ideas there, Ethan, at least?
And this is also something that we've been working on in our retreat too, so maybe that would be a good place to link up when we have our next one, or yeah, whenever, whatever that is.
Yeah, maybe we actually bring the planning commission in with the retreat, some portion of it at, at least.
Yeah, that's all very good input. Thank you, appreciate that. And if you, you have ongoing thoughts on that also, please let me know, it's not all limited to tonight.
All right.
Um, so I think that's pretty much it. I was going to talk to you about next steps, but I've, I think people would appreciate a break before the council meeting, but.
Six minutes.
Yeah, needless to say, we'll uh, be back in front of you again to talk about all of this stuff.
Can I say one, I was thinking just one thing, would there be some sort of resource we could bring in to talk about how the GMA affects developers and stuff? Like, I don't know if like BIA or somebody like that can come in or even, I mean, have a developer in-house right now, just to kind of help us understand how these different guidelines are affecting what they're trying to do. Because it's putting all these additional costs onto the developer, eventually that's going to get passed down to the people that are buying them, which is, which is going to increase the cost no matter what you do, so.
The Building Industry Association, as you said, of Clark County has been pretty active and they've been, um, they've come to the Clark County um, council a couple of times, I think at least, and then I think the Association of Washington Cities kind of tends to provide some of that type of, of input. Brandon and Bronson, maybe also, I don't know if you can think of others?
No, I think the BIA has been active and might be a resource for what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely look into.
I just talked to Clark County City.
And their website does have some explanation of like the impact of population allocation and so you might look at that.
Any further questions? I'd like to thank everybody for attending this long session. I'd also like to thank the planning commission for working with the city council. Uh, at this point, I'd like to call the work session closed. Thank you. Just turn me on. Testing. Get this a little closer. Clerk, please start the recording. Perfect, thank you. Today is Wednesday, January twenty, twenty-four, twenty-fourth, 2024, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Fox, present. Councilmember Casper.
Councilmember Casper, are you still on the line?
He was getting back on.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, he's absent in excuse.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leha.
Present.
Councilmember Servany.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here.
What?
Where are you? Okay.
I was here.
I didn't hear.
I'm all, where were you?
I'm still in the work session.
Yeah.
Thank you. Clerk, can we please call up any public comments from the audience?
Yeah, Al Phillip.
Al Phillip, 152 West 15th Street. Oh. Fifty years ago today, I finished my two years compulsory service in the United States Army. Due diligence. Yeah. We just did this workshop on the comprehensive plan and where La Center is going to go. So it's up to you guys to do your due diligence, get all the facts and figures. Now Al's going to tell you, you know, we don't care about anybody moving into La Center. If we can encourage people to move out, that's great. But what we need to do is get jobs, 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 jobs. And let's not ruin the downtown. You know, let's put those jobs out there by the freeway where they belong. That's, that's where they're going to happen. They're not going to happen down here. You know, this is always going to be the downtown. Now again, this is all according to Al, of course, you know? And, and you may have a dream of, of expanding the downtown, which is fine. Everybody should have dreams. You know, my, my dream stopped about 40 years ago, you know, and, and it's gone downhill since then. But jobs, 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 jobs. We need jobs, rooftops, don't pay the bills. Okay. It is what it is. God bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Al.
There's no more cards.
No more? All right. Thank you again, Al. Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Do we have callers, clerk?
Hi, this is Kimberly Goheen Elben, live citizen of Clark County, Washington, and lives where my mother was born in La Center, Washington, USA. I'll mention that I've spoken this week as usual at the United Nations Members Vancouver City Council and yesterday at the Clark County meeting. And today there was the first Clark County Board of Health meeting in over four years, excuse me, four, uh, four months. And they won't tell us why. And they won't tell us, we the people, why has there been no Board of Health meetings during these difficult days of fentanyl overdoses, child sex crimes, human trafficking, and with millions of illegal immigrants, we are now seeing absurd world illnesses in America. Shame and worse to criminal Biden and the agenda to take down a free nation for that one world order government and to depopulate. So I ask La Center citizens to get involved in the Clark County Council and the Clark County Board of Health meetings immediately. They have them every week. You can do it by phone, even if you're at work. It's your duty. I'll mention that they have the same council members on the board and the council, which I find disturbing and a matter of conflict. The comprehension plan follows the GMA, the Growth Management Act, which I've been warning citizens about, which time will show are unconstitutional by design and are polluting our country with overpopulation, including illegal immigrants. This is a very deep swamp. So I'm going to ask citizens to listen to FM Radio 101.1 and AM Radio 860 and 970 for the truth that you can discern for yourselves. Speaking to ordinance number 2.8, this property butts against the Lewis River. I resent homes going in there. I think they should sell that property to a farmer and I think we need to get out of the GMA, as I've said. And frankly, it was said today, Clark County will dictate to us. We are a city, we have rights, we can keep our small town community and not have 10,000 people in a little town that you can hardly get out of right now. The traffic is horrendous. There's people that don't give a crap about who, what I'm, we're driving or anything. They just, they're just zipping around. Okay, we can live with that, right? Education and all that. This all property also on page number 58 of the agenda mentions that the city of La Center, a political subdivision of the state of Washington. So I don't understand that, a political subdivision. Maybe somebody can educate me on that one too. So as we all know, we, I, I serve God, family and country, and I'm out to inform people. Again, go to the Clark County Council meetings and the Board of Health all the time as much as you can. And also I'm happy to participate here in the La Center City Council meetings. And let's get the, the meetings up on that reader board in a timely manner. It was put up, I believe I called on Friday and staff did put it up on Friday evening, as I noticed. So we can have that up on a Thursday, Friday, every, every time we have a meeting. So God bless you and God bless America. Is my time up?
Yes, yes, thank you.
For the record, Councilmember Casper has joined us.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other callers calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name for the record, name and address for the record. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
Okay, I will go grab it. We'll come back to that.
We do have one? Okay. We'll come back to that then, counsel. Next up, consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Are we okay, clerk? All right. I will move on to the mayor's report and then we'll come back to the last read comment. The county is seeking applicants for Community Action Advisory Board. Positions include low income representatives from the county's fifth districts and a community representative from the county's fifth district, which is the district La Center is a part of. The term begins immediately and are three years, ending December 31st, 2026. Application information can be found on Clark County's website or by contacting Abby Malloway at 564-397-7832, 564-397-7832. I want to let the public know how important this position actually is. This is a position that helps out with low income and the homeless and also as a group gets to help decide how the county spends funds on the homeless and low income. It's a very, very important position. So if you're interested, please apply. We got the clerk. All right. I'm going to jump back to the public comments section. Clerk, can we go ahead and read that public comment, please?
Yeah, it's from Nelda Perryman, Pioneer Loop, La Center. Says, I would like to publicly thank Mayor Strobin for contacting me to see if I needed anything during last week's ice and snow. I know I was not the only one he checked on. His calls were greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mayor Strobin.
Thank you. Next up is the attorney's report.
Thank you. If you'll recall, when we were talking about regulating camping and we talked about a couple decisions out of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, that said that it was unconstitutional to ban camping everywhere all the time. So the US Supreme Court on January 12 decided to accept review of the Grants Pass case. And so the, those two cases, one came out of Boise.
They didn't do the Boise one?
The Boise one, that case actually settled, so it's no longer subject to review. But the review of the Grants Pass case is going to bring all those Boise issues right into it. So they have to, they basically cover the same territory. So the Supreme Court will be hearing that case. It's probably going to hear it in the springtime and maybe we'll have a decision June, you know, early summer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bronson, isn't that the, the Grants Pass, isn't that the one where they tried to put an ordinance against blankets in public?
That, that's right. That was after the Boise decision, so they knew they couldn't say no camping everywhere all the time. So instead they said you can't use blankets or, you know, just the rudimentary measures to protect yourself from the cold. It was sort of a roundabout way to try to ban camping. And so the Ninth Circuit came to the same decision. But what, what the court also did though, is they didn't just ban that, they also banned an ordinance that prohibited camping in parks and city parks and, and imposed an injunction against the city from enforcing their ordinance on banning camping in city parks. So it went beyond that blanket issue that I talked about. And so that's where it's really going to bring up the issue of what can cities do to try and regulate camping within their jurisdiction? So. Other than that, I, I did send out some information to you on rules of procedure. And we've talked, I know you've got a pretty full plate with matters to deal with. What I think I'm going to do next is build like a, a table with the, kind of the issue, for example, voting and what some of the options might be. Do we vote by district number? Do we vote by seniority? You know, here are some of the options that you could pick from. And that might be a way to simplify things a little bit and make it more digestible for when we do have a workshop to talk about them. Does that sound good to you?
Yeah, where do the, the folks who are asking for money, how is that different? Obviously they're not camping in that moment, but obviously we had that issue a few months back and I think we got them a ride out of town. Hopefully let them talk enough, they'll tell you where they want to go. You know, that's what they learn in the hospital, by the way. Anyway, I'm serious. It saves them a lot of money. Hey, put you on a plane and send you to Arizona and you know, the person's gone. But obviously in this situation, when people do that, how does that line up with?
Right. So we did talk about panhandling.
Right.
The regulation and that is pretty settled law at this point. And the First Amendment prohibits us from regulating speech based on the content of the speech. So if you're going to regulate and say you can't ask for money, you can't hold up a sign saying need money, that's regulating based on the content of the speech of the sign. So what jurisdictions have done is they've tried to say, well, you can't stand in the right of way or you have to be this far from the right. And so trying to do it by time, place and manner regulation rather than content of speech.
Okay. Okay.
That answers your question?
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions for the attorney? I think for the sake of time on that, Bronson, I think that, yeah, we do need to either have the workshop or schedule you in a small session of our retreat, of the next retreat, maybe an hour or so to kind of go over that type of conversation then.
Sure, whatever works for the council.
Thank you, Bronson. Next up, council comments. Councilmember Fox.
Hi, good evening. Glad to see so many folks here, some new ones and our great followers that we love. I just want to say that some work changes came up for me and for the next six months, I'm not going to be able to attend work sessions in person or online. So I am going to be doing everything I can in my own time to be looking over the PowerPoints and anything that's shared during work sessions. I had a teacher that had to take a leave due to unexpected medical things that came up and I just could not let my students suffer for that. So I am having to stay until six. So just for six months. So maybe that would be a great thing to add to the retreat instead of a work session or it's something I can also read up on myself, on own, but just know, please, I'm doing my own due diligence in the background. Last month, I got to help a local farmer who had a lot of leftover daffodils. He has a tulip farm over here on the corner of La Center and Woodland, had a lot left over and got those into the right hands with the planning committee and they got put daffodils all over in town. So that's really exciting. Those got to be used instead of, you know, losing the chance to, to grow. So we'll have those in town and I just want to thank so much the planning committee for just all their volunteer hours that they do all the time, just a great donation. So I hope to have that, you know, as a great connection for years to come, just if they have excess and we can take that and, you know, put it in the roundabout and put it out everywhere. So just very nice. So other than that, that's all I have. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you and congratulations on the engagement again.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Casper. Councilmember, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me now?
Right. Yes. Did you get your power back?
It just came back on, so I'm going to, I'm going to survive the night. So I, I actually don't have anything to add tonight, so I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, every, everyone. Thanks for showing up. Nice to see you all. I'm trying to think of what I got going on. Yeah, it's been a little bit of a crazy season here for the last couple of weeks. I'm on day seventeen straight of working. I'm a lineman and it's been busy. But with that, I was going to give a little PSA. I don't know if anybody saw what happened down in Portland or the family where there's three people that are now deceased because their power line fell onto their car and they tried to exit. They killed them. Unfortunately, very sad and, you know, our prayers go out to that family. But just for your own safety, if that is ever the case with you, it's the best thing to do is to stay in your vehicle. And if, to not be in your vehicle, the best way to get away is to hop on two feet. There's scientific reasons for that, but for the most part, the safest place you're going to be is in your car and it should. The electrical system is designed to have its own protection to shut down after a certain amount of, I'll just call them rotations. So anyways, I want to say that, so just kind of got to be aware with the inclement weather that we have, the ice and snow. Electricity is nothing to play around with, so just kind of be aware. Other than that, I was going to make an announcement. February 9th is the final day for registration for the Little League and that includes T-ball, minors, majors, softball. So if you got little ones that are interested in playing, there's a La Center Little League page on Facebook with the website. I don't have the website in front of me, but yeah, other than that, good to see everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Leha.
Well, it's good to see everyone here tonight and especially my friend Phil Sample. We started 20 years ago or something? I don't know. Yeah. Phil used to be a corrections deputy with me and then he moved on up the corporate ladder to the enforcement side and now a commander. So it's good to have you. So it's good to have you here. I'm excited about that. I was going to bring you a donut on Monday, but I didn't make it over there.
Sadie and Josie's only.
I'd like to encourage, too, people that are over sixty-five to come to Meals on Wheels on Thursdays, and we have really nice lunches there, and usually several tables full of free food that you're welcome to take with you. But tomorrow, we're not meeting, I don't think.
I was going to ask Brian to actually...
Why, why aren't we meeting?
Okay. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if the, if the community center was ready. Sorry. I should have asked you for. So anyway, anyone that's over sixty-five, please be welcome to come, and anyone else that would like to come and help us volunteer there, that would be wonderful. So that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Saverny.
Thank you. Just like to express my appreciation for all of you being here once again this evening, and for all of you that went out and checked on your neighbors last week during the horrible storm and ice that we were experiencing. I know how welcome my neighbors were when I knocked on their door and took them chocolate chip cookies that put a smile on their face, and just, you know, a way to check on them and make sure that they're okay. But thanks for coming and participating in the workshop, as well as this evening's meeting. It's always appreciated.
Thank you. We do have some staff reports tonight. We have the administrative service staff report. Maria Swingerinske will be presenting. Maria?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The December sales tax disbursement was seventy thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars, which is right where we were a year ago. It's always good to see. And then we ended the year at just over one point three million dollars for our cardroom revenue, and this December was slightly higher than we were a year ago. And a couple of special events that are coming up that I wanted to bring to your attention. We have a blood drive on March twelfth here at City Hall in the afternoon, and citizens can sign up online through the American Red Cross, or they can contact Desi, and she can assist you. And then also, we have another senior tax relief event coming up. So on February twenty-ninth, the assessor's office will present at Meals on Wheels, and then on March first, people can come and meet with them if they are eligible for that relief. And the way that that works is the value of your property is frozen, and then you receive a reduction in your property taxes. And then, not on my report, but we do have a couple of positions that are open. We, on our website, you'll find the posting for our code enforcement officer, as well as our seasonal maintenance positions. So if you know of anyone that would like to apply for that, those jobs, those are now posted.
I think you arranged that blood drive for when I'm out of town, because you didn't want to get beat again.
Well, yeah, I am competitive, and last time I beat him, and how fast I went, how fast my blood came out, that was our competition.
Here we go. I did two to her one, so. Thank you, Maria.
Yes.
Any questions for Maria? All right, so now there's no questions.
I did have one question. For the cardroom tax disbursement, was that, how close was that to the projected?
I think we actually projected about one point six, so we were under.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Great report, Maria. Any other questions? All right, next up is our police staff report. But before we do that, I was going to take a moment, and you kind of spoiled that moment for me, Mary, councilman Lea, to introduce Commander Phil Sample. Commander, if you'd like to take a bow or stand, and so everybody can see you. Commander Phil Sample comes to us from Clark County Sheriff's Office, and he will be manning the Nuca, or the police station, I was going to say Newt Police Station, but the current police station there. Feel free to stop in and say hi to him. He does like glazed donuts, obviously. So, there we go. This is good. I appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Seriously, we definitely are very appreciative of it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, welcome.
So tonight, Chief Richardson will be presenting the police staff report. Chief, are you on the line?
Yes, Mayor, I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and I just want to say that Commander Sample, he looks really good on TV, so he just needs to know that. We had six crimes reported in December of twenty twenty-three, and that was down from nineteen reported in December of twenty twenty-two. Of the six crimes, we had one fondling crime, which was a sex crime, which was a two fifteen-year-olds, male and female acquaintances, where the male touched the female inappropriately. We did take a report, we did submit it to the juvenile prosecutor for review, and we're just waiting for the outcome of that. We had a theft from a vehicle, which the vehicle was locked, and unfortunately, the gentleman had his power tools and construction supplies stolen from that vehicle. We had two assaults, both of which were domestic violence assaults, and those were both likely we had the sheriff's office handle those for us, and I appreciate that. In one case, the boyfriend was arrested at the scene, and the other one, the boyfriend had left. In that particular case, the suspect is still outstanding. And finally, we had a vandalism where a suspect damaged the locking gas cap of a vehicle to get into the gas. As you know, we've been having several of those. If you're lucky, they just siphon it out of your gas tank. If you're unlucky, they punch a hole in the bottom of it, drain your gas tank. So it's actually something that's going around the county. As far as, I'm going to just go down and bypass a lot of this, we had one arrest last month. We had four the year before at the same time. Our one arrest was the DV-related assault that I mentioned. And then, as you can look at, calls for service have been declining. I think that once we get the sheriff's department staffed up and rolling, I think you'll see an increase in those kinds of things, as long as the state legislators don't somehow restrict our ability to stop people and make car stops, those kinds of things. But we are in a legislative session again, and there are some more bills coming up, some of which they tried to get passed last year. And so we monitor those, because we, I am concerned about if they try to restrict car stops, that we can't make them, except for really important things like speeding. But there was one out there last year where we couldn't stop people if they had warrants, or suspended license, or equipment violations, those kinds of things. So that always is rearing its head, so we'll see how that goes this year. Monthly reports, we only had eight. And then I, what I did, I did a comparison of twenty twenty-two versus twenty twenty-three, and you can see that, for the most part, we're right where we should be as far as crime. We did have a significant decrease in larcenies, which was good. They went from fifty-six down to thirty-two. Our auto thefts went up from two to ten, but if you remember, the year before last, we had, I believe, twenty-one or twenty-two. So we're, they're still high, but they're high throughout the state and throughout the country. And once people get these Kia and Hondas fixed, that they can't steal them, I think you'll see some reduction in that. And then finally, I did a five-year trend on all of our crimes that we report to you every month. And if you look at it, remember, you see these large increases and decreases, and that's just because the numbers are so small. And, but assaults are trending down, burglaries are trending down, larcenies are trending down, auto thefts have peaked a little bit, and vandalisms are now trending down. Narcotics went up from zero to one. I think you'll see more narcotics arrests as we get more patrol officers out on the street in the center. But, so that's it for that, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief?
Chief, are you seeing increases in the domestic abuse countywide, kind of following the same trends nationally?
I will be able to tell you a little bit more, but for the most part, DV-related assaults are up. If I remember correctly, from last year's statewide report, they're up across the state. That report will come out again in about April of this year, and we'll look at it again. I don't know the reason for it, but you, just like our, our assaults, almost ninety, probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of all of our assaults are DV-related.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you again, Chief. Great report. Next up, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. We do have an ordinance tonight, twenty twenty-four dash zero one, the Barnhart annexation. Jamie, I'm going to butcher your last name, I do it every single time.
It's Viveras.
Viveras? I don't know why. Yeah. Jamie Viveras will be presenting the ordinance tonight. Jamie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one is to annex approximately fourteen acres into the city of La Center by the sixty percent petition method. The annexation area consists of one tax lot located at the site address of five fifty-five West Fifth Street, La Center, with one property owner, Edward Barnhart. The property is in the city's urban growth area and borders city limits to the northeast and south. The East Fork Lewis River borders the west side of the property, and West Fifth Street runs along the south side of the property. Most of the property is undeveloped, with a single-family home, a barn, and associated outbuildings located on the property's east side. The applicant previously submitted a ten percent notice of intent to annex, which was accepted by the city council through resolution twenty twenty-three dash four seventy-one on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. There is currently no new development proposed with the annexation application. Annexation is regulated under RCW thirty-five A dot fourteen and La Center Municipal Code Chapter eighteen dot two ninety. For the direct petition method, there are two phases of annexation, the ten percent petition and the sixty percent petition. This property is currently in the second phase of annexation. To be eligible for annexation, a property must be contiguous to the existing city limits and within the current UGA boundary for the city of La Center. The application process for a sixty percent petition for annexation is as follows. The applicant submits a sixty percent petition form containing signatures of property owners representing at least sixty percent of the assessed value of the area to be annexed, along with supporting documents. Upon submission of the application, the city must conduct a lead agency review of the environmental checklist and issue a CIPA threshold determination for the zoning designation, review evidence regarding public facilities and services, and seek a certification of sufficiency from the Clark County Assessor's Office. Once these items are complete, a public hearing on the ordinance shall be scheduled with notice published in the newspaper mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet and posted in three locations on the subject property. Per La Center Municipal Code, the LDR seven point five zone is the default zone to be applied upon annexation of areas designated urban residential. The city shall also apply the urban holding ten zone to land where capital facilities are inadequate to support development under current zoning. The applicant submitted a sixty percent petition for annexation and all required supplemental documents on November third, twenty twenty-three. As mentioned, the subject property is contiguous to the existing city limits and is within the current urban growth boundary for the city. The Clark County Assessor's Office issued their certificate of sufficiency on December seventh, twenty twenty-three. City staff issued a CIPA determination of nonsignificance on January tenth, twenty twenty-four. The comment period was open until January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, which is today, at five P.M. The city received one public comment from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife on January eighteenth, included in the agenda packet. No additional public comments have been received. Last, city staff conducted an analysis of the public facilities. There is existing water, sewer, and storm system on site that would likely need to expand depending on future development uses. At any time future development is proposed, park and school impact fees would be collected at the time of building permit applications, and development of over four lots would require a public road to be constructed. Golden Eagle Ave is stubbed to the north end of the site and can be extended through the site. Staff recommends that the city council approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, annexing the Barnhart property with the following conditions. One, the annexation area shall be zoned LDR seven point five with a UH-ten overlay. The UH-ten overlay will remain in effect until any identified capital facilities deficiencies are resolved. Once these deficiencies have been resolved, the applicant can apply to have the UH-ten overlay removed through a type-two review process. Two, upon the effective date of the annexation ordinance, the property shall be assessed and taxed by the city in the same manner as other similarly situated and zoned properties. Three, upon the effective date of the annexation ordinance, the property shall assume its proportionate share of the city's indebtedness. And four, all items identified in the public facilities analysis of the staff report shall be completed prior to any future development. There is a proposed motion for city council on page eight of the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions we have.
Thank you, Jamie. That was quite a, quite a bit to read. Any questions for Jamie? Okay. At this time, seven oh five, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience? Clerk?
Al Filla, one five two, West Fifteenth Street. Hey, the Barnharts want to annex into the city, is that a great idea? You know, if private property owner wants to annex to the city, great. The question is, what are they going to do with it once they get annexed, you know? But I think it's a great idea. I think the council should vote to accept the annexation as it is. And then, once that happens, and some people have dreams for that property, you know? Hey, everybody's got to have a dream, you know? Now whether other people agree with it or not, that's different. It is what it is. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Are there any other public hearing comments from the audience? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. All right. Any public hearing comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and stick to the ordinance at hand, please. Okay. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No, there are not.
I would now like to close the public hearing at seven oh seven P.M. All right, council, any comments, questions, concerns?
Does he already have developers lined up? I mean, I'm assuming...
I, I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. Yeah, just curious.
I agree with Al.
Which is why you agree moving forward, but you want everybody to move out, too? That's quite an anundrum.
All right. Can I get a motion for this ordinance, council?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash O one, annexing the Barnhart property as legally described in Exhibit A of the ordinance, subject to conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved or seconded. Clerk, this is an ordinance? Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Fox? Yes. Councilmember Casper? Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Lea?
Yes.
Councilmember Saverny?
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Good job, clerk. Very good job. All right. Welcome to the city, Barnharts. Next up, unfinished business. We do have one piece of unfinished business. You know, I don't know if it's my old age that's getting to me, but I forgot about snow was adrift last week, and I want to just make sure that I extend a special thank you to the city staff and the Public Works Department, because they did an outstanding job on snow plowing and keeping those roads cleared, almost so much that I wanted to complain that we're doing too much, right? No, seriously, y- your team worked so hard throughout the entire day and really did one heck of a job. You know, when you, when you look at news reports at the city of Portland or other cities, and cars are sliding out and slamming into things, and people are falling down, that wasn't happening here. Most of those cars were making it where they needed to go. So I just want to make sure that you and the staff know that's a very, very big thank you, and I would encourage people of the city, if you see a city employee, to thank them. It does go a long ways.
I have a question real quick about that. Is our local, like, HOA is allowed to, like, maybe call if they feel like, hey, our, like, to come down the side streets a little bit? Like, if they feel like the snow was really bad in the side streets, like, to call the city to say, hey, would you mind sending a crew over here to help with this snow? Like, it's really bad, you know? Because they're not do, doing all the little side streets, obviously, or going down. streets, obviously, or going down, well, I mean, not the side streets, but I mean, going down actual neighborhoods.
They were.
Oh, well, not on.
Everywhere.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just curious. I'm probably becoming the president of my HOA, so I'm asking, and I live on Eighth Street, and my street could have used a buzz cut. No, I'm just wondering, like, do people ever call and say, okay, my, are we, are people allowed to do that? I'm just curious to say, our area is really bad, do you mind trying to hit it tomorrow when your guys are out, or, yeah?
Yeah, so we welcome any calls, you know, we have a prioritized route system where we certainly, you know, we focus on main roads first, and then secondary roads, and then, as we have, you know, time and equipment.
Yeah, and energy and manpower.
Well, and as the storm allows, you know, if it's snowing hard, it's basically all we can do to keep up with the main, you know, roads, and then as it starts to slow down, then we can start getting into those secondary routes, and then, once the event sort of, you know, stopped and it's stabilized, then we can start getting into those neighborhood streets like that.
Okay, cool. Yeah, good to know. Okay, thank you. Yeah, good job. Thank you, Public Works. Come over and add you to my list. I'm kidding.
All right. Counsel, is there any new business?
No.
All right. Can I get a motion to close the meeting? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Meeting's closed.
Thank you.